Hey, thank you. All right, we are ready to go here. So this is the June 8, 2021, meeting of the Groton Planning and Zoning Commission. Jeff Pritchard is the chair. Staff tonight is me, Deb Jones. There is an opportunity to address the commission under public communications. You will have to raise your virtual hand to do so on an Apple device. You can find that on a phone. It is star nine.
Okay, so I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. First item is roll call. I want to see Kevin.
Kevin's here.
Oh, is he?
Yes.
Me or Jeff? Thank you.
And so we're, everyone's here. So we have the quorum. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. We have the minutes for May 25th, 21. I'll make a motion to approve those minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Does anyone have corrections? No corrections?
Did a good job.
All right, so there are no, no corrections. We'll vote on the motion to approve the minutes as written. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion is carried unanimously. Next is Public Communications. Does anyone on the commission have any communications identify? I have.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Barbara.
I have been approached by a couple of downtown merchants who are still quite concerned about Three Water Street. One of the concerns was possible garbage from Abbott's and where that's going to be stored. And I do believe on the site plan, although I went down there the other day, I believe there is a place where the dumpsters are, but they seem to be concerned about odors from lobster shells and, and things like that. So I did say that I would mention it tonight. Also, they're concerned about overflowing dumpsters. I believe this was right after Memorial Day holiday and perhaps things hadn't been picked up yet, but they were quite concerned about the appearance around Three Water Street and SIFT in particular.
Anyone else have any communications? I have one. I received a notice from the town clerk's office that Paula Zoo Perry has been appointed to fill the open alternate position for Planning and Zoning Commission for a term that expires December 31st, 2021. Does staff have any communications?
I'll just note that you received a number of emails regarding the Mystic Education Center. Those have all been forwarded on to you. You've also received several today and from the weekend actually about one Pearl Street.
Does anyone on the public wish to address the commission tonight?
There's a couple of folks who would like to.
Okay, if you want to invite them in and.
I believe this is Scott Westervelt.
Yes, ma'am. How are you? Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep, we sure can.
Excellent. Excellent. Good evening, everybody. My name is Scott Westervelt at Seven Boulder Court, Mystic, Connecticut. I'm here to talk about the Oral School Project, the mega development up there. As I was listening to the town council meeting the other day and going back to meetings that I've attended with the Planning and Zoning Commission, or at least listened in and spoken at, there seems to be a disconnect that I believe is disingenuous to you, the Planning and Zoning Commission. Two of the counselors indicated that the fault lies with the Planning and Zoning Commission for why nothing has been done yet on the Oral School Project. I disagree with that because my understanding is that the, there with me for one second. My understanding is that you, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, have not been given anything to work with. So, and if I understand things correctly, you were not consulted when the consultant was hired to generate the proposed draft that is the proposed draft text amendment for the Oral School Project. And if that's the case, then I'm not sure how they can place blame on planning and zoning for why this has been delayed the way it has. Apparently though, I think you're going to have a shot at something soon because my understanding is that tonight, things are being presented to the town council at the Cal meeting with regards to this project. So maybe we can see some movement here. So we have something. I believe, I believe you all are doing a great job. I would like to just make it known that as part of the Mystic Oral School Advocates, we aren't opposed to development of some kind. The area is zoned RU-80, and I think when it was zoned RU-80 years and years ago, I think they had a great idea and they seemed to understand what that area up there should be like, should be like and should be kept at. I believe that would allow somewhere between maybe 22 and 25 homes, which is not something that, that would be bothersome such as the 931 apartments that are typically going to go up there, or at least according to the developer's plan. So I just want to, you know, state that I am in favor of development. Keeping it RU-80 would be, would be awesome. I think that's what it needs up there. I guess one other thing I'd like to say is through some of our research, we came across a town in Rhode Island where their Planning and Zoning Commission thought that they had to approve amendment or zoning changes to allow a massive development, only to have the whole thing go horribly wrong, yet they thought they had to do it because the town council said that's what they wanted. And I understand that the Planning and Zoning Commission, you guys are going to look at this for what you believe is right for the area, and I appreciate that. And I certainly hope that the town council doesn't put the pressure on you to make changes that are not warranted. So thank you very much for all that you do. Hope you all have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. All right, Steve Van Brown.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I want to say that the next time you see the hand up under Van Brown, that's so Beth Tillman can talk. We're, we're sharing a computer. My name is Van Brown. I live at 925 River Road, Mystic, Town of Groton. Chairman and Commissioners, I have great respect and gratitude for your selfless work as individuals on behalf of all of us. You also have my sympathy. It appears you are being set up to be the scapegoat. It looks like you are being asked to be the deciding body on whether or not the Mystic Oral School monstrosity goes forward. I read that you are responsible for enhancing the character and quality of the town's neighborhoods and preserving opportunities for healthy and sustainable environments that contribute to a high quality of life for all people who live, work, and visit Groton. With all that. I beg your pardon? I'm sorry. With all that's been said in the press and social media, do you believe that your constituents think New Yorker, Westbury's Mystic River Bluff is the best, is in the best interest of our town? There are many who will bring up Restler's criminal background. Most talk about bribery and ripping off a union. I think it would be especially interested in the fact that he was convicted of perjury and misleading public servants. The case had to be reopened to force Restler to fulfill the terms of his plea bargain. We do not need more litigation. Restler took a zoning violation all the way to the New York Supreme Court where he lost. The Supreme Court stated that the petitioner's Restler's credibility and the prior inspector's credibility were a major issue for the court throughout the hearings. In short, what went on with the prior inspector does not pass the smell test. We do not need more litigation. What is most disturbing is that no one can clearly state how Restler came to hold the cards he does in our community. As Restler does not seem to have performed any of the requirements of the state and or town agreements, he remains true to form. Restler does not have the experience to construct a project of this magnitude. Some of his smaller, much smaller projects are still in construction 10 years later. I assume you are familiar with the quiet neighborhood around the Oral School. They are modest but very nice homes with small streets leading into a rural road. Now imagine the 442 unit apartments on 37 acres in Shenacostet, less than half the proposed Restler mega development on approximately the same acreage, or the ledges with 339 apartments on 20 acres, one third the proposed units on half the acreage. Both developments are served by major streets. These much less intensive projects loom over their neighborhoods. You really don't have to imagine the impact. You can see what it would be like. And they do not have a hotel, offices, a swinging hotspot, or a theater to add to the impact. Where is the proportion here? How can you condone destroying a family neighborhood for the benefit of a man with a proven track record of bribery, misleading public servants, zoning violations, and non-performance? Develop the property? Certainly. With this man and at this size, how can you face this if you do? These, there has been little or no performance on the behalf of Restler, and his promises are already changing. Why do this? What is the benefit to the town of Groton? This is probably beyond the scope of what you're asked to decide, but it should be part of your consideration. There is little to no benefit to the people of this town in sacrificing that neighborhood. We have waved the flag of taxes, and yet all the tax we would receive is going to support this developer. He got this beautiful property for a dollar, and the town is supporting his financing with the tax money that should benefit the town. In the end, we would have this monstrosity of a development and nothing to compensate we, the people, for the loss of that neighborhood. When I first heard the name, I had to laugh. In poker, I wonder what a Mystic River Bluff is. Thank you. The next hand up would be Beth Tillman.
Yes, ma'am. You don't need to.
I'm sorry, is Beth going to speak?
Yes, I was going to speak.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, and Ms. Jones. As I listened in on your deliberations on the parking lot on Pearl Street, and I was downtown picking up pig food at SIFT this morning, I noted that the parking lot around the condominiums on, near SIFT are, the entrance is on the main street side and the exit is further up where there is more visibility for all of the pedestrian traffic on that road. I had thought that the way the discussion went last time, that it made more sense if the Pearl Street lot is approved, that that too would have the flow so that the inbound traffic would be closest to Main Street and the outbound would be further up the road where the visibility sightlines for pedestrians are better. That said, I also need to address a little bit about the Oral School. It's RU-80. Please keep it as close to that as possible. Anything larger flies in the face of the studies and comments made by the Planning Department and prior documents where rural streets, small streets, not enough utilities, not enough support for this project loomed large in those, those documents. Please give the public ample opportunity for spoken and written comments in the upcoming workshops and please publicize those heavily so that all who are interested throughout the town are able to attend, raise questions, and make comments. Thank you very much for your time.
Let's see, Roseanne Katuski.
Good evening, Roseanne Katuski, 24 Ann Avenue, RTM District 5. Today, many of us received an email from Deb Jones. Thank you. The email describes the land use process to redevelop the Mystic Oral School property and the steps that are involved. In the paragraph before the steps, it states that while the commission is aware of the Restler draft master plan, they are not developing a text amendment specific to that plan. For months, I have brought to your attention the January 15, 2021, Horsey Witten zoning text draft for the Mystic Oral School property. I have shared my concerns repeatedly that there are Restler comments, concerns, maps, and suggestions included in the draft text. Considering that while the commission is aware that the Restler draft master plan, they are not developing a text amendment specific to that plan, does that mean that when we see the next text draft for the Mystic Oral School property, there will be no mention of Restler anywhere in the document? Deb, at the end of the email today, you say you are happy to answer questions. Could you please answer this question, yes or no? Will Restler be included in the next version of the text draft? Yes or no? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. See, Becca Welch.
Hello. I finally did not double mute myself. At least I hope I didn't. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I got nervous. I'm Becca Welch, 32 Boulder Court. Thank you, Ms. Jones, for your email today. I appreciate knowing that the commission has received my emails, and I appreciate the list of steps you laid out that delineate the process. I suspect that by now you're all very tired of hearing from us, especially when there are so many steps between now and ground being broken at the Oral School. But I watched the Star Street subdivision discussion and it really worried me. The lesson I took from that is that if the text amendment that is coming soon changes the zoning to fit Mr. Restler's vision, then any plan he presents will have to be approved. Maybe I misunderstood, but that's what I learned from the Star Street issue. At the last town council meeting, several counselors mentioned that the power that rests in the hands of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Please don't let yourself be pushed into approving changes that you know will be detrimental to our community. Thank you for taking our concerns into consideration as you work on the text amendment. Thank you for listening, and I really hope that the folks at the Inland Wetlands Agency will be as patient with us as you have. Thank you.
Let's see, Bill Ferguson. You're muted.
Good evening. Hear me okay?
Yep.
Good evening. My name is Bill Ferguson. I live at 118 Edgecombe Street in Mystic, Connecticut. I'm also the president of the Downtown Mystic Merchants, and I'm here to speak in support for application for one Pearl Street, Leo Roche's new work. I just also served on the Parking Commission that John Reiner and John Burke presented about 10 days ago to the community. So I'm very involved with the parking of downtown Mystic, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of Pearl Street because of the additional parking that it will provide and help alleviate the, the already kind of congestion that is present. And I just wanted to just voice my support for this project as, as it's laid out because I believe it will help alleviate traffic off of the residential areas as well as the main street area. So thank you all for what you do. I'm on the Historic District Commission, so I feel you're paid on alternate Tuesday evenings, and I just want you to have a good evening.
Thank you. Let's see. Janet Mayer.
Hi, Janet Mayer, 88 Ann Avenue, Mystic, Connecticut. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. Dear Planning and Zoning members, the more I learn about the Mystic Bluffs proposal, the more alarmed I become at the many risks and unintended costs, but I'm going to keep to planning and zoning issues. At another meeting, I referenced the 2016 Planning and Conservation Maps, which speak to the recommended density for the area, environmental concerns, and some challenging topography. I do not see that a development of this size and scope is in agreement with that document. I believe that this development will have a huge impact on both our quality of life and safety. I keep coming back to traffic. When I get off the exit 89 during rush hour, it is often very close to backing up onto the highway. How can we possibly fit hundreds to thousands of more cars? I've been over in my mind so many times, I just don't see a way. Where do we place lights so that the highway won't back up at rush hour? Sandy Hollow, Allen, Ledgeland, Oral School? Will cars at one light back up to the next light or back up to the entrance or exit ramps? Will the traffic block the fire station or ambulance service, even if you put lines and lights there? How many new residents will attempt to walk or ride their bikes along Cow Hill? To me, this is a death sentence. Will people get frustrated and attempt to pass on Cow Hill? There is no shoulder or breakdown lane on much of Cow Hill. When an accident does occur, how will the area be accessed? When you add this many people, you even have to consider expanding parking at your local parks or cars will park along the roads blocking traffic. And hilly, narrow Cow Hill is by no means Strazdick Drive where the ledges are located, so the acreage reasoning comparisons that have been used are not valid. The proposed development also appears to ignore the recommendations in the redevelopment of Mystic Education Center document prepared for Town of Groton, Connecticut, Planning and Development Services prepared by BBH, Camoyne Associates. Here's some quotes. All roadways would have to be rebuilt and brought up to town standards where the site to be redeveloped or reused. It should also be noted that Cow Hill Road is a rural residential street, not designed to handle major automobile traffic. The media area is quiet residential neighborhood, which means certain uses, especially high traffic volume inducing uses, will be incompatible with surrounding properties, specifically uses that would induce new truck traffic are extreme, especially problematic. The site is not located adjacent to any major roads and has poor visibility, which decreases the viability of many commercial uses that rely on foot traffic and visibility for major transportation corridors. Access to the site is limited to low volume residential streets. Local roads leading to the site are poorly maintained and in need of repair. So that's all from that document that where they researched it. Finally, I'm concerned with the process and order of steps of choosing this development. In my opinion, Planning and Zoning Commission should not be put in this position. I, as a concerned citizen, do not want you to feel pressured to pass a zoning change or bargain down to say 300, 400 units, which based on the area and research documents is also still way too large. We must think of the safety of our family, friends, tourists, and community. Quite bluntly, I believe that overloading the rural roads will lead to deaths, and as a community, we will be responsible for this decision. Thank you again for all the other listening you've done and your consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Elizabeth NATO.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Elizabeth NATO, 380 High Street. I'm speaking against the mega development. I have been looking at the proposed changes for the Mystic Education Center floating zone, and I would really encourage you as you are setting your zoning changes to look at all of the incentives that are listed here and consider that in your original number because it seems that these incentives would be something that they should just do for smart business, but I, I don't understand why the density would need to be increased so much if they apply either one of these. We'd have no grass. We'd have no trees. We'd have nothing but buildings. That's basically it. I have sent you a letter before so that all my feelings that still stand. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Todd Brady.
Good evening. My name is Todd Brady from 31 Water Street in downtown Mystic, and I'm speaking about the one Pearl Street development. As someone who was, is on the Historic District Commission, I'm very familiar with this project because it did involve some modifications to the, the house, the two-family house that is fronted on Pearl Street. And I had heard that in the prior meeting about one Pearl, that there were concerns expressed by certain members of the commissions, commission about the width of the parking lot in the back, which as I understand it is a current non-conforming use dating back to the days when it was used primarily by customers of the Bank of America. And I had parked in that lot quite a few times myself, being a Bank of America customer. And I just think that it's important, or I hope that the commission members in, in deciding upon the fate of this proposed parking lot and development weigh the positives and the potential negatives. And I think that as also a member of the Mystic Parking Task Force, I'm very familiar with the parking issues in downtown Mystic. And any addition of parking spaces, I think, is something that is extremely important to the town and benefits the citizenry and, and our tourists and everyone else. And so if there are concerns about the fact that you don't have quite the normal amount of backing and turning space, you didn't have that before, and I managed to get in and out of that lot quite a few times. And so I just, I just hope that in weighing the pros and the cons, you can find your way clear to improve this because I think it's important for downtown Mystic. And and that's, that's really all I wanted to say, that, that I think that we don't have to be the caretaker for anyone who drives in there. I mean, the, the owner of the lot can post to say, we prefer you have compact cars. They can't enforce that. I understand that, but people are pretty innovative and pretty capable. And I don't think that we have to worry about someone getting stuck in the lot and not approve it for that reason. I just think that the 20-plus spaces is just very important to Mystic. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, that's it.
Okay. And we can move on now. Next item is, let's see. You have SIT 2109 Mystic Parking LLC, one Pearl Street continuation.
Promoting the applicants. Let's see. Here somewhere. She is. And I was going to say, I don't see Leo. See him now.
Right with me. Is Sue here or the other sheets?
Yep. Do you have anybody else?
I don't believe so. Bob, Sue, myself, and Leo. All right. All right. Good evening, Commissioners. So my name's Sarah Moriarty. I'm the attorney for the applicant. I'm sorry I was unable to join you last time. I did, however, listen to the hearing and understood the concerns that you had. So we're going to take an attempt to address those, but there's a couple of things that I wanted to talk about first. So we're gonna take an attempt to address those, but there's a couple of things that I wanted to talk about first before we got into just a couple of things that might have been understood or misstated. And the first one is time. At the end of the hearing last time, I believe the commissioner had asked Ms. Jones if we were under any time pressures on this particular application. And per zoning regulations, we're not. But from our perspective, we're under a very significant time crunch. So this approval is a contingency of the purchase, and that expires tomorrow. So if we don't have an approval tonight, we aren't able to go forward with this particular application. So that's why we've been so time-sensitive on this project. The other that I just wanted to make sure we were all clear on is that this is a pre-existing parking lot. We've been able to find surveys dating back to 1963 that show the very exact same dimensions on our site plan, which show leased parking lot, too. I think at that time, it was Hartford National Bank. We also have leases from the existing seller and some photos that can delineate the exact aisle width of, I believe it's 19.78 feet between the spaces. So we do, we're right on point with the, with the existing non-conforming. However, we heard you that you have some concerns about maneuverability. So at some point throughout this hearing, I can show you some videos that we took that do show that cars can get in and out of the parking lot. We did a little simulation over the weekend that we can screen share those with you. I know that the other concern that you had was safety, getting out of the exiting driveway and then on to the, the street. So I'll let Bob and Sue go over the site plan changes and the technical components of the application. But there's one change that you won't find on the site plan, which was the change to the applicant's business model. So I think that when he went before you two weeks ago, it was kind of unsure as to whether the spaces would be leased, whether they would be hourly. Well, after listening to your concerns, it seemed that it might be best for everybody if during the weekdays, those spaces were leased to individuals. And part of a term of that lease is that oversized vehicles wouldn't be permitted to park in the parking lot. And then on the weekends and holidays, that those spaces be used hourly, but they be utilized with an attendant in place. And an attendant being there can assist exiting vehicles, alert them to any pedestrians, and navigate that particular concern that you had over pedestrians and safety. So with the reduced traffic in and out with the leased spaces and then the attendant being available on the weekends, I'm hoping that that will alleviate a lot of your concerns about the exiting vehicles. I don't know if Sue, you want to walk them through the, the site plan changes?
Sure. I'm going to use the narrative that you had submitted. I believe all the commission members have that, but we can go through it one by one and then say how we addressed each item. The concern about the pedestrian safety, which you just discussed, that they may not see cars, we address the concern as follows. The proposed parking lot shall be leased Monday through Friday to specific individuals and businesses. This shall decrease the amount of traffic in and out of the parking lot. On Saturday, Sunday, and holidays, the parking lot will be open to the public. An attendant will be on-site as needed and will alert pedestrians and exiting vehicles as the vehicle leaves. 1B, we added a double stop for drivers exiting the driveway. So what we did there was on the egress, we added a painted STOP stop just above the proposed slotted drain, and we added a one-foot, 12-inch-wide painted stop bar between the slotted drain and the sidewalk. I'm sorry. I thought it was.
Yeah, I think we're just getting some background noise.
Okay.
The Commissioners, yeah.
Okay, we added signage for exiting vehicles, alerting them to look for pedestrians. And you will find that as you're exiting, and the detail appears on sheet three, and it says, "Slow pedestrian crossing." And there's a image of pedestrians crossing. We added signage for pedestrians, alerting them to look for exiting vehicles. So as you're walking down the sidewalk, you would see a sign at the, at the egress saying, "Caution vehicles exiting." And again, that, there's a detail that appears on sheet three, and it's a picture of a vehicle exiting and with the, with the words, "Caution vehicles exiting." And of course, as I mentioned earlier, that would be the attendant. We had concern about visibility exiting the driveway. We address this concern as follows. The applicant visited the site and denoted that there's more visibility than initially thought. A photo depicting this will be forwarded. So we had a photo in your package. And Deb, everybody has these, right?
That's right. They, they were forwarded on, when we, they were received, and they were added to the agenda packet online.
Okay, so that would be this photo right here. I won't do a share screen, but that would be that photo of the girl walking down the street, and that would be where the egress is, and you would be looking down Pearl Street. Mirrors to be installed per Planning Department's advisement. So we actually added a note on the plan on sheet two, directly across from the egress driveway on the opposite side of the road, and say, "Proposed mirror to be installed per Planning Department advisement." So we would actually look for the best spot to be able to put that mirror in order to have it be the most effective. We have an attendant on the weekends that can assist exiting cars if necessary. And there was concern that the kiosk was on the wrong side. We've eliminated the kiosk because, oh, there we go. We've eliminated the kiosk because we are going to have an attendant. And during the week, it will be leased spaces just to people that Mystic Parking decides to lease to. Concern that there's not enough space to turn and that, that we would be creating a car trap. The commission was concerned that the site plan did not provide enough space for cars to pull out of their spaces, as there is 19 feet of aisle width. So we've addressed that. We have reviewed this, the site and historical data. And this parking is, in fact, a pre-existing non-conforming use with 19 feet between spaces. In your packet, you'll note that this aerial photograph from 2011, which you could actually measure, the aisle width was 19.14. Deb, do you want me to share these? Because I have them actually in an email that I could click on.
If, if you have the ability to, I think, I think you should because we can't see what you're holding up.
Okay.
I can, I can bring them up. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so I got disconnected for some reason. Let me I can show you the, this is the snippet. Can everybody see that? Or is that I have to unshare and then reshare?
I think you might have to minimize sheet two, Deb.
That's me.
Oh, you're sharing sheet two, Bob?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Let's see, where am I here? Okay, so nobody can see anything now, right?
Oh, we see.
Okay. Pause here. Okay, can everybody see that? Do I have to do that again?
No, we're seeing part of sheet two now.
Okay, all right, let me.
There we go.
You got the photo.
You can see that?
Yes, the photograph.
Okay, so this was a Google snippet from '09, 2011. What I did was I went back in history in Google Earth and, and then went to the distance tab. So I put a line from the end of the white spaces here. Let me see if I can zoom in a little bit here. Yeah, I'm not sure if you can see that. But I started with a line at the end of the, of the white, you know, paint bar, painted lines, and stretched it over to the, the end of the white painted lines on the south side, and it automatically tabulates the distance of that line, of that yellow line that you see. So this was done in 2011. Anything before that, the, the imagery is not as clear. I mean, I can go into, well, I mean, this, so this basically shows they had about 19 feet at that time. And then, let's see. Yeah, so, so getting back to the, the site plan.
Can you pull up, Bob, the prior picture that I showed, the photo of visibility with the girl walking down the street? Just so they'll have that.
That came in an email?
Yep, that was in the same list of PDFs in the video.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I thought I could, I thought I had that, but maybe I don't.
I can share it if you can't, Bob.
Well, while you're looking for that, may I share something, Deb?
Yes, you should be able to, but Bob needs to stop his share.
Let me stop sharing. Okay. You can take it. I think.
Let's.
There we go.
So this is the plan. This was not in your packet. But if I could talk about this just for a minute, this is the leased area right here.
We don't see anything.
Oh, share screen, share screen.
You click the share, and then you choose what screen you want.
All right, let me go back to that. Okay, how's that?
Yes, now we can see it.
Okay, so this is the bank right here, and down here is West Main Street. And Pearl Street is over here. So this is actually the leased area of the parking lot right here, Hartford National Bank lease. So we have a dimension here of 5587 and a dimension here of 5569. I took the average of those, and it's 5578. And then I subtracted an 18-foot-long parking space from this side and an 18-foot-long parking space from this side, and the aisle width remaining was 19.78 feet. And this map is from 1963. And it's, you know, the best available evidence of what existed at that time. And I haven't actually seen a copy of the lease, but I would assume that the lease described was described by these bearings and distances depicted on this plan. Just if I could just show you the title of this. There it is. Planet Property of the Hartford National Bank Mystic Branch. And the date is October 1963, additions May 1, 1964. So that was, you know, a good 60 years ago. So, okay, so that's, that's that. Bob, did you find that other photo?
No, I'm still, when, when was the email?
It was the one where we were invited to the Zoom meeting, and it listed all of the exhibits that Deb Jones had uploaded. The trials and tribulations of Zoom meetings. Hopefully, it'll be a distant memory in the near future. All right, well, while you're looking for that, and if you can't find it, I can, well, but I'll, I'll continue. Okay, I'm going to bring up actually sheet two again. To further confirm that the 19 feet does not create a car trap, we created a simulation. And, oh, let me, that's the video. Hold on. We moved the wheel stops closer to the property line to allow the cars to pull in further. So the wheel stops were moved to within 1.5 feet of the property line. We've also added a turning radius on the site plan to further depict that this engineered plan will allow vehicles to pull in and out. And that would be in this area here, we've depicted a sample vehicle, and it gives the dimensions of the vehicle. And then it also depicts how the vehicle can pull into the spot quite easily. And of course, the vehicle sizes are going, there won't be any large-size, oversized vehicles. So these would be, in, in my research, you can go from a compact to a full-size car, I believe, in these parking spaces. We just don't want any oversized vehicles. And that will, of course, part of that would be policed by the attendant. And also during the week with the leased spaces that Mystic Parking is planning on doing.
Sue, I have that photo if you want me to share it.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay, if you just want to stop.
Stop sharing.
Okay, you should be able to see that? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so just the view from the left, and you can see further down than, than I believe was originally anticipated. And that's taken a little bit back, is probably from where you would be as your car was exiting, as your tires were probably resting on the front sidewalk. So I will give that back to you, Sue.
Okay, and we had, I might mention that we had considered swapping the ingress and the egress. I know there was some talk that they wanted to keep it the way it was. We were unable to get feedback from engineering on that item. But that is something that, you know, still could be done if, you know, that was the commission's desire, that they felt that that was a better situation. And we can talk about that later if you want. Okay, so we showed that. And we've restricted the parking lot to no oversized vehicles. Okay, concern of the commission that how do you inform the public when the parking lot is full? We've addressed this concern during the week. The spaces will be leased and not open to the public. During the weekend and holidays, there will be an attendant alerting the public if it is at capacity. We added an area for trash for the tenants, and that is located, yep, right in there. It's a concrete pad for the trash and recycling. There was a question about the Jersey barriers, barriers outside of the Harp and Hound that have been there due to COVID and to allow outdoor dining. And there's another photograph, if Deb, do you have that handy? That depicts what that looks like as you're going north on Pearl Street and that the barriers are really the same width as the parking spaces. And do not extend into Pearl Street in course.
Right, but that that is the case, that is an approved outdoor dining area under one of the governor's executive orders, and that approval is still valid.
Okay. And that that really doesn't cause any problems for us entering into the parking lot. Okay, so we want to depict the video to show the video that was prepared. I believe you had a little trouble uploading that and that Sarah has that.
I can show that.
I could show that too, if you have problems, Sarah.
Little whirl here. All right, can everyone see this? Now push play. So this is pulling in and backing out. There were six cars parked around him. Five cars, this was the sixth. Yeah.
And Leo, that vehicle is 17 feet long, correct?
That's right.
All right. We have other photos, I don't know if, I'm sorry, other videos, I don't know if the commission is interested in hearing them, I don't know if they have any questions for us at this point.
The applicant completed their presentation.
Oh, I would, I would just like to make a few points that are, sorry, I, I got disconnected there for a little bit. And I'm not sure if I, if everything was, was went over. But what we've shown, can everybody see my screen on sheet two?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so what we've done is we've taken the typical radius for a vehicle that's 15.6 feet long and seven and a half feet wide. And I measured my car, I have a Santa Fe, a Hyundai Santa Fe. And it's actually 15 and a half feet long and it's, it's five feet nine, basically wide. I know the Odyssey, I believe, is probably, I think, 16, eight or close to 17. If I think that was mentioned on the previous meeting. But as you can see, you know, if the vehicle is pulling in on the north side, they can easily maneuver into, you know, the parking space. And as Sue indicated, we, we reduced the distance from the wheel stop basis, the front of the wheel stop to the property line. Previously, we had three feet. We reduced that to one and a half feet in order to accommodate cars that may have their, their front axle closer to the front fender as opposed to, you know, other cars where they're, they're further apart. So, so we've done, we've done that on both sides as well. So that'll give, you know, a full, a full 18 foot width, you know, of a vehicle in there. I think that was. And another thing I just wanted to mention is that we have, we tried to contact Public Works, Colin, to request him to look at an entrance on the south side to come in and have the exit on the, on the north side. Because as you can see, the, the orientation of the building is such that it's, you know, very, you can see south on Pearl Street a lot better. And of course, you can see north on Pearl Street because, of course, there's another driveway right there. And the visibility is a lot, a lot stronger, a lot easier, a lot more visible as you look north. In addition, if vehicles were coming out on this side, they would also have a better opportunity to see any pedestrians, not only from the north side, which is obvious, but also from the south side. So we, Sue and I both, you know, left voicemails for him. But he was, he hasn't returned our, our calls as to date. And I don't know if Deb had any conversation with him. But that's what we'd like to consider. And again, you know, with a, with a parking attendant, you know, if it's a leased space, you know, people know that they're going to go in and they're going to, whether they're coming out of the north or coming on the south during the week. If they're leased, they know where they're going. It's not going to be tourists or, or, you know, transients that are coming in sort of, you know, scoping out and looking for a parking place during the week. They're going to know where they're going. On the weekends, there's going to be an attendant out front directing them. And he's going to know whether the parking lot's full or the parking lot's, you know, has a couple of spaces left or it does not have any spaces left. So we feel that we've, in addition to the, you know, the stop bar here, the stop signs, do not enter a slow pedestrian crossing, as Sue mentioned, as I, as I got back into the meeting. We added a painted, a 12 inch wide painted spot, stop bar at the entrance. So, you know, either way, if, you know, we feel that, you know, either option would be best suited for, you know, this development. I mean, that's not really going to affect the rear parking lot at all, you know, with two-way traffic. And as long as there's, you know, there's not a vehicle which, you know, we, as indicated before, we can't really, you know, prevent a large vehicle in there. But if they, they're aware that there's, that we do not, you know, recommend large vehicles, obviously, nobody wants to get your truck dented or, or whatever. So we feel that we've done the best we can with the conditions and, you know, the 25 spaces that we're, we're adding. You know, we really feel that it's, it'll be a big improvement to to the downtown area and basically with a, with a need for that. I think that's all I had.
Yeah, I might add that the applicant did have some discussion with John Burke, who is the transport, parking and transportation expert for the town. And he said driveways exiting and entering an area in a historic district like this or any real downtown, it's, it's not uncommon to have a situation where you really have to look out for the pedestrians on the sidewalk. And, you know, we've tried to do our best to be able to to come up with a plan that, you know, is going to be safe for everybody. And I think under the circumstances, you know, we really tried to address the concerns from the last meeting. We hope we did, you know, we, we'd like to answer any questions now that you have about the plan and hopefully put any concerns that you have to rest.
All right, so if the applicants completed their presentation, then we'll move to the staff presentation before opening it up to the commission for questions.
Thank you, I don't have much to add. To reiterate, this is an existing lot in a historic area that needs additional parking. I think the, the applicant has done pretty much what they can to address the concerns. I don't know if they can do anymore.
All right, so I'll open it up then to the commission for their any questions they have or requests for additional information. I'll start with you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only, I'm really impressed, I'm so happy that, that the applicant was able to address these issues the way they were. I think that from my point of view, they did a very good job. The only issues that I would have at this point are, and it could be a technical item to define a holiday in this shopping district, you could call the whole week between Christmas and New Year's a holiday or St. Patrick's Day. I don't know if that's a holiday or not. I truthfully would be comfortable if so long as there was an attendant that the public could be loud, that would be, you know, I would be comfortable with that. So whether or not the applicant would define what a holiday is or which ones they would expect to, to open it to the public or simply to say that if it is open to the public, there would be attendant available. And, and I still would like to see the driveways reversed. I would prioritize pedestrian safety. And I, and I would hope that, you know, however other commissioners feel about that. And maybe the town engineer would be able to put, give us some input if this new plan now is very different than what he was looking at or she was looking at the last time. But that's all, thank you.
Hal?
Okay, I've, let me just start off saying I'm inclined to approve this so everyone is off the defensive for this thing, since I had so many attacking remarks before. But I do have some, some tweaks and details I would like to cover. It might make it easier if you'll stop sharing and I'll just share my screen of the exact same plan so I can point. All right. Thank you. Screen. And I have no idea which this is. Are we sharing the screen now?
Yep, it looks good, Hal.
Okay, all right. So I'll share another one too. So one thing, just for the record, it doesn't change anything, but for the record, we saw the video and everyone was pointing to it, but there's the existing chain link fence there. And that's what we all, and there's the curb that we all have parked our cars up very near wheel stops or no. So, and there was nothing here. So the effective, regardless of the lot lines, the effective parking was wider before. Once you can overlap the curb or there's nothing out here, that makes it wider. So this is narrower than it ever was in our, since we've been here. It shouldn't have been because there's the lot line, but that's not where the, you see, that's not where the fence is. There was no fence over here before. You can even see, that's why the island is out this far. If effectively, it just didn't quite look like this. So there was more room before, and that's why we all could park there before more easily. That doesn't stop a skilled driver from going in and out of here. I see the, the diagram you put in here and for a 15 foot, six inch vehicle, I'll say that's okay. It makes me wonder why, you know, we're not a board that's going to now say that pretty much every town's standard of Quinn 50 states, which is very similar to the idea of 24, 60 feet total between the two parts, two buildings. Almost everybody has 60 feet, and this is five feet less. So that's a lot less. So if you're assigned spaces, you limit the size of the cars, I guess I can live with that. I would want to say that the signage should say that clearly. Can't say oversized because then the guy with the pickup truck that thinks his car's okay will be in here and it traps everybody else. So need to put the dimension in there so that you can actually have some grounds for not having an argument with somebody of what means oversized. I don't know what that means. This is going to be really nasty in here. But you're right. It looks like you can pull it off. I don't know if 15 foot six is the dimension you need to put on there. I'd be happier with that because that at least gives you, gives you something to defend rather than somebody looking something up. You can take a tape measure and say, sorry, sir, your car is sick, actually 16 and a half feet, that's too long. I do have a question about, oh, before the swapping, the the in and out. In every way, I think that's a great idea. It just takes all the sightline problems and they all go away. Because if you go in here, you don't have to worry about sightlines coming out here, you're right. The sightlines are wonderful in both directions. That's just the way to go. The downside is it gets kind of close to Main Street and I don't know why we care that much if, if one is pedestrian safety and one is traffic safety. Trap, nobody's moving farther than, past than five miles an hour by the time they get to that point. So I'm okay with trying to save the pedestrians, please. I'm not quite sure I understand with the, the leasing versus open parket. Who are these being leased to if not the restaurateurs who need the space during the weekend? Who, who's going to be renting these spaces? Weekdays rather than weekends.
Are you, are you looking for an answer?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, there are 300 people on the waiting list for the Mystic Art Association parking lot. I think that there's a lot of people in the community that, that are, are beggars and not shooters at this point. And they'll take five, five day a week parking over no parking. And, you know, that's something that the applicant's willing to bet on. And if it doesn't work for him, then he's going to have to figure it out. But, you know, I think that there's such a parking shortage that people are willing to take five day a week parking.
Well, if it's businesses that are asking for the parking, then it's for their employees. In which case, it doesn't matter if it's open or not. It, it opens up parking town, whichever 25 cars are in there. In fact, part of the goal was to try to get employees off the street. So if they're parking on the street and you can get them all into this parking lot, that's 25 more spaces we have on the street. That would be a great thing. Weekends even better. So I'm not quite sure I agree with the idea of open parking weekends because that's better. I don't know how that's better.
Well, it makes it more. It certainly makes it better financially for the applicant. So, you know, in an effort to, and we're also getting cars off the street on the weekends. They're just not employees, they're most likely tourists or someone coming into town that wants to run into a shop rather quickly and can't find a spot. Either way, it's 25 cars off the street. The theory behind the leases versus open spaces is, you know, it's easier to have leased parking during the weekend. Not as costly, costly, costly to have an attendant there seven days a week. So to try to mitigate it, five days a week is leased spaces and then pay the attendant for the other two days and the holidays. Or as Mr. Payne suggested, anytime you have public parking, have an attendant.
I just have a fear of all our plans are of oversized cars and things just kind of goes away the moment there's, happens to be the attendant is on a break and it's a weekend, which as was mentioned, holidays and weekends could be most days of summer. So I don't know, that one, I'm not that fond of. I understand the idea of, well, that makes it more, that more beneficial financially. But our goal, the reason we like this is because it provides parking not profit, or that's not our position as to how much profit you can make.
I certainly understand that, but whether it's leased or not leased, it's still 25 cars off the street. And that's 25, 25 spaces of, of parking. And, you know, with regard, we can't, I mean, at some point, we can't police everything. He's, he'll have no oversized vehicles, he'll have, you know, terms with the leases, he'll have the attendant monitoring that. I mean, at some point, people have to be responsible. And I don't think that we can micromanage that.
No, I don't think so, but I, I think we agree completely. Leased versus not leased, still has 25 parking spaces that have been freed up from elsewhere. And so why we like this project is it gives us 25 parking spaces, not because it's a, you can get more money one way or the other.
Right, well.
If in fact, in fact, if it's leased and the sign is just there 100% of the time saying private parking, no, and no unauthorized entry, then you don't need an attendant except for occasionally to see if anybody's sneaking in. So. that what you won't need it for, if we reverse the flow, then I think our, our problems with being afraid of killing pedestrians goes away. I think that part just works great if we can get to do that. So the attendant is there so that you can charge to, for the parking, but that doesn't add any spaces to the mystic. It just makes some of them make more money than the other five days out of the week. So that part I'm not fine with. The idea of controlling who is on these spaces, so you know which cars are there. I think that's, that's fine. That's, I watched the cargo in and out. It's not great. It's like, you can see why, there's a reason why twenty-four feet is the thing to do. But I guess you can pull it off if you can control the cars. But I can't say I'm approving. I like the idea of it just being open parking and, and having the having the attendant watch this for the entire time. I'm not that keen on that. One little detail, and this is a detail, is that the handicap spaces. One thing, I can't find anything anywhere that tells me that a handicap space is anything less than, the handicap space has to be the closest spaces, because they're not supposed to walk behind anybody else's car to get to where they're going. That's, that's just the way the rules go. That's why you'll see weird striped things going on even in Walmart and wherever else. And you have the opportunity here, you just decided to give the tenants the frontmost ones. And I, I can't, I can't see approving that. There's just no reason to do that. It's, the handicap spaces should be up close. Now, in terms of rearranging the spaces, you're not taking advantage of what you can do. You show, you know, the van accessible parking space being eight foot and eight foot, that's correct. Actual thing is a handicap space, van accessible space is sixteen feet. We traditionally stripe eight feet of it, but they get to use the entire sixteen feet. Likewise, a regular one is fifteen feet. You have ten and five. It can be also be striped nine and six, doesn't matter. They get to use the whole space. So wherever this, the stripes go, you can actually strike a couple feet on one side and three feet on the other side. All of that's legal to do. You have some flexibilities how those fit in. And I suggest you kind of use that to your benefit. Here, you're just kind of pushing them back into the lot. You can even, frankly, you could even conjoin the eight foot and the five foot stripes, which technically, as I said, the handicap people can use any which way they like, but it gives you a better turnaround space in there, but then maybe you'll be afraid somebody will park in there. But I'd say they, they have to be up front to get those people out from behind the cars. There's, that's kind of a a basic tenant of the handicap spaces. You can use of these islands that you got here. I mean, if the handicap space is here, then you could cut back some of this island and make more of it just painted to be part of the, the setback painted area, the striped area of the, of the handicap. So you could actually shove it, you actually shove the whole thing over a little bit to get your handicap spaces into one side. But, yeah, anything more than one handicap going by one other handicap is, is kind of, it should be out of the question. Not supposed to go behind these guys because they're tenants and therefore they're special. Special goes away unless the tenants are handicapped. So they should be, they need to be either here or here, or one on either side or something like that. Advantage to one on either side, just because that makes getting in easier, because you will have the striped area next to it. And up front here, you've got, actually you do have a decent amount of room. Not quite sure why you didn't take advantage of it here. You've got this gravel part here, therefore he could have taken the wheel stop and put it right up against there. It's not gonna hit the fence. The fence is still far out here. Could have gotten a couple more, this eighteen feet, could have been out to a point, two feet beyond, beyond the line there, because the car will overhang. I do suggest you do that, just open it up where you can. Maybe you can just get three spaces across here, the handicap going the other side. But something else, just take advantage of that. This space here, having the car overhang that, there's not gonna be a fence there. That's just a line of paving.
Yeah, we could, we could do that. The intent was to have the tenant spaces close to the, you know, the residence, so they, they were, you know, most convenient. Again, you know, if, and the idea was to keep the handicap on one side, because for handicap people to come out, they need to go have a wheelchair and go down the driveway, because there's physically no, no room. Originally, we didn't have handicap spaces and we didn't feel it was necessary, because, you know, the, the two family house with only two families, doesn't require handicap access. And since the other spaces were not required per zoning to, to satisfy the principal use, that these were in addition. So we, originally, we thought that we, we didn't need to provide handicap spaces, but at the direction of, in public works, I believe, built official, it required that we, you know, we add two spaces. And, you know, we were at twenty-seven, but by the time you add one, after, after twenty-five spaces, you have to have two spaces. So, you know, if we only had twenty-five, we can get away with one handicap space, but since we have twenty-six, we required two. So it was, you know, we required two. We didn't want to have them, have handicap people crossing the, the access lane. We certainly can, can switch those if the commission feels that that's important to, to put them in the two tenant space close to the bike rack. That, that wouldn't be a problem. And as you indicated, Mr. Zad, that, you know, the, the paint striped areas, you can make them, you know, to, to satisfy, you know, a little bit on each side, you know, as long as the, the sixteen foot of van width and the fifteen feet of a final, I mean, a regular vehicle can be accommodated. The area just to the south of that, those two spaces is stormwater retention area that was used to accommodate the stormwater quality that would be generated during the site. As you can see, that new pavement that's in the area where the, the tenant spaces are that are called right now, that will drain to the south and that's, that's an infiltration. It's like a, like sort of like a septic system, only it's, you know, crushed stone, where the stormwater runoff will go into the crushed stone and basically infiltrate and, and percolate into the ground to recharge the groundwater without having, you know, pollutants run off the site. So, but that, you know, you can certainly push those, you know, those, the, the wheel stops closer to the end of pavement, and that would give a little bit more elbow room. Of course, there's twenty-two feet in that area, because, just because we had a little bit more area of the property. So, I mean, if we were to shift those, you know, that twenty-two foot space for handicap is, is probably very good. Of course, not as good as twenty-four, but I mean, you know, we have, we are, we have what we have, you know. But if the commission feels, you know, strongly on that, we can certainly, you know, work with staff and, and adjust those to be closer to the building if, if they, they find it required.
I think you just use it, because here, you know, you show this area here, but you've got this little strip here that you're showing not gravel, and that's supposed to be grass. Of course, it's not. It's gonna end up being gravel. So just move it out here, so you end up with the two feet of gravel coming out from the fronts, maybe even this area here, or depending on when you redo the parking, maybe the, that, that car will actually come out into that space, but you'll see what, how that works. I don't really care. But, you know, having a little bit of grass here and this little sliver of grass there, it's, of course not. You can't, you can't take care of it. So it should be gravel across there and push it out to where it does you some good. So I, I think it might actually make it a little more open when you first come in. And that would be a good thing. As far as the signage, what about the signage? So I didn't see, maybe I'm missing the sign, public property. Is the, one of the signs would be that no public parking Monday through Friday, or something like that, something really clear. There needs to be a sign there someplace, or no unauthorized parking. It's something that's fixed. Otherwise, there won't be an attendant and people will pull in. I think that's it for me.
All right. Barbara?
Oh, I want to say one, one thing about the, the mirror idea. Quite honestly, I, I understand the goal there to put a mirror here. I, I can't be a favorite. I can't imagine it working. Even in streets where there's just nothing going on, maybe sometimes I have seen those, when you see in some places where it's just kind of out in the middle of nowhere and they're, or it's very, very dense and, but there's big wide open spaces. This thing here is gonna be on the other side of the street and the other side of a sidewalk. Good luck if you drove out here and could actually look into that to see what, figure out what you're looking at on a convex mirror. Usually I think those are better off for looking down the road, some distance, that around a corner where you can't see. So I, I get it, but I don't know what to do about it. I think if you put this here, the right answer is to switch these.
Ingress and egress.
That makes, makes that all go away. If for some reason, there's some absolutely great reason for not switching them, then I do suggest that this central line here, you do have a little bit of room here between the curb and, actually, this is like a top curve of the steps. It actually protrudes up, I believe. And I really suggest that you pull this out and curve it back and just use that extra two feet that you've got there, so that you have the extra two feet on the other side. That just gives a visibility across this, an extra little bit of chance. It actually straightens it out against the street. It should be coming out perpendicular, not in an angle. So it's, it kind of fixes a little bit better. That's, that's the slightly better version. The best version is switch them, and you don't have to worry about that. Now I'm done.
All right. Okay, Barbara?
Yes, Hal, I'll ask you to leave yours up, because I'm going to want to refer to it.
Okay.
I have several questions. If you'll go up to where that north entrance is. When I was down there the other day looking at this, right where your arrow is, there's, I believe there's a fence there, and I don't see how that would improve the visibility coming out at all, if you've got a fence at, in the north edge. It, it would be worse than coming out on the south side.
An opaque fence?
I wish. I believe there is a fence between the two driveways.
There is a little picket fence. You can see the symbol there, that little, those two dashed lines is a
No, I don't, I don't see that.
I tell you what, I can share another screen of the, of, I'm looking at the, the street view of it.
Yeah.
I'll show you that.
That, I believe it ends a little bit before the sidewalk, too, if I'm not mistaken.
Maybe I just remembered that there was a fence there, so if you were pulling out from the north driveway, it would be worse.
I have a photo.
There it is.
Oh, okay, all right.
There's the fence.
Okay, if, so if, if that, if that's all that fence is, then fine. My memory was off as, as to the height of the fence. Now, going back to the parking lot itself, when you were backing in and out, when you're parked at the westernmost spaces, you were showing how, yeah, you can bet, you'd go out, but that car would end up backing out the entire way. There's no place for it to turn.
Yeah, we left the
We do have, yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, we left the five foot typical space. I'm pointing to it, making, thinking that you can see my thing, but, yeah, and that's it. And this is, I've, there's a five foot space there where a vehicle can pull out and turn, you know, and get a, you know, a two-point turn to pull out or pull straight back, and we've left that, that other nine foot wide space there. So they can pull directly back and then just, and then pull out to the right. You know, in, originally, we left that nine foot space there for people that pull in and there is no spaces. They're able to, to pull into that space, back out into the five foot space and, you know, do a three-point turn to turn around to get out. Otherwise, it's, you know, you're dead. But that was, you know, specifically designed to, to allow for that, and hopefully that won't even happen if there, you know, at least spaces and there's no public. Well, I mean, if it's, it's a public coming in, if somebody's, well, well, I guess it will, if, if it's open to the public all the time, you know, that will come in very handy, but if it's, you know, leased attendant spaces where they're actually numbered of, you know, during a week of some sort, you know, everybody knows where they're supposed to be going, everybody knows how to get there. The, the idea with the, the attendant on the weekend, you know, he'll have a count of how many spaces are left. So he can, you know, tell people that lot's full and, you know, close it up as it goes. So but we, we use that as a, you know, just for that instance.
I think you're optimistic. And I guess this goes back to another point, I think Hal and, and Mike made. The sign that says, public, I mean, private parking, or however you're going to word it, how, that's going to be up there all of the time? It, it's gonna be permanent sign.
I believe the plans were done before the, the applicant decided, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, and, and Leo, but I believe that, that was the sign we had on there originally. And so that, that sign may be tweaked a bit depending on what the outcome is, whether it's, you know, tennis spaces during a week and, and open to the public, you know, on the weekends, so.
Right above the tenant sign, Bob, public parking, which we can modify that with staff if that's amenable to everyone.
It just, I don't quite understand. If I drive there down on a Friday, I'm going to see, okay, I can't park there. But if I drive down on a Saturday, how do I know I can park there?
That sign will be adjusted, you know, tenants, tenant parking, one, you know, M through F, and then, you know, public parking, you know, weekends or something. I, I'm just starting thinking out loud.
Exactly, no, that's Yeah, you mean leased parking, right, not tenant parking.
Oh, leased parking, yeah. Yeah, public parking, weekends only, or, I don't.
Right. The appropriate sign.
I don't, I don't think you've got the details down here very well.
Well, it's, I think the details are, are down pretty well. The, the signage, this particular sign, I think we, we might have missed when we submitted the, the application and didn't realize that we needed to correct that one, but it would be private, private parking Monday through Friday, public parking Saturday and Sunday.
Okay. Now, where is the, where is the attendant going to be?
The attendant would be at the exiting driveway.
Exiting.
Exiting?
Exiting driveway, yes.
Is he going to?
Together, but the plan, the, the plan that we discussed was that he'd be at the exiting driveway, you know, to navigate cars leaving the parking lot, and then if cars were coming in, he could alert them, because it is rather close, whether the lot's full or not, which could also be accomplished in signage. Just like the Mystic Art Association.
Is he going to have a little stand? Is it gonna have an umbrella on it? Is it gonna be?
I think it's probably gonna be something very similar to the, what the Chelsea Brown parking lot has, you know, the, the, the individual.
A beach chair and an umbrella.
Right. So.
I don't know about that.
Well, I mean, it's already done and it works, it seems to work fine for them.
Well, they're doing it on their own. It had nothing to do with planning and zoning, I believe. Now, walking out, when, when you park your car and then you're gonna walk, you're gonna be walking down this relatively narrow driveway to get out. Are there any zoning issues with where the pedestrians are going to be walking?
No, I mean, we are retrofitting an existing parking lot. And, and, and they are trying to address your concerns. I mean, no, there's nothing in zoning about whether or not you walk down a driveway. Nor are there any standards as to where an attendant sits. I, I, I know, I know. It's just, I think these, a lot of these things can be handled, you know, by tech items. Um, I I I know, I know. It's just, I think these, a lot of these things can be handled, you know, by tech items. Uh, and and likely will be adjusted as as they figure out how the parking is used by the public.
Okay. And my last question for which I have no knowledge is in a lot of previous um site plans, we've talked about impervious surfaces. Is is this something we have to worry about here? Any drainage issues since it seems to be more paving? Than there had been? Perhaps I'm wrong about that.
Well, go ahead, Bob. You can explain it right.
Maybe I could, if I can share my screen again, I can sort of. Thanks. Okay. Okay, so. So in the back, in the rear parking lot right now, this this whole area is paved. There's a there's a grass strip alongside the original property line. Uh, this whole area is all pavement and all drains, as you can see from the contours, flow goes perpendicular. It flows into this dry well here, which catch basin with the dry well top. And so um we've under, you know, we've inspected that and it appears to be working functioning properly. Uh, after rainstorms, there was no pounding. Um, you know, we did put notes on the plan to indicate that. Uh, it will be backed out once a year just for leaves and debris and whatever that gets that gets involved, you know, gets into it. In addition, there's a small drain that takes a little gutter uh that comes off of the adjacent property of this retaining wall right here. Uh, the flow goes to the south into this drain, which we understand is connected to the dry well as as well. Um, the the tenants, uh, the kind of stamped concrete, which is basically this line here. That goes around it encompasses the entire um, you know, the original existing entrance. Uh, that will remain the same. Uh, the runoff now, you know, drains drains into the street uh on the slope. The rest of it drains off. Um, it's actually it's pretty flat. Uh, so what we've designed and the new pavement is basically this area here and I indicated. There's a strip of pavement between the two, between the stamped concrete and the existing pavement. And then, of course, the the driveway in this area. So what we've designed is the the stone water runoff from this small pavement here. Is going to drain to the south into this three foot thirty foot long, three foot wide, a foot and a half deep crushed stone. Uh, infiltration trench where it's been sized to handle the the first inch of runoff in accordance with the Connecticut D E P. D E P uh guidelines. Um, so basically that that'll channel a one inch storm uh without any runoff whatsoever. Uh, and then the pavement here has been designed, as you can see from the contours, to drain towards towards Pearl Street. And what we've we've done is we put in a track drain with a uh. A twelve inch, a twelve inch perforated uh HDP pipe with crushed stone. And there's a detail on the third sheet that basically is six feet wide. And again, that's handling all the stormwater, you know, for one inch uh stormwater quality to infiltrate in the ground. So it doesn't go over the sidewalk and cause the icing condition in the winter time and so forth. So. Um, we've we've done the best we could to um, you know, to handle any of the increase as you know, indicated. Um, and and also we've we've created some pervious areas such as uh, you know, this island back here. Uh, this island back here. Um, it's the west end of the property and planted some landscaping and and trees. Uh, with also in addition to rather than paving uh this portion, since it's basically just grass right now. Uh, we're going to install crushed stone surface, which is uh about a ninety two foot long, three foot wide area to promote. Uh, groundwater infiltration uh in that area as well. So um, whatever surfaces that we. Uh, needed per zoning to comply with the parking lot, parking space requirements, we've done our best to. To to make those uh permeable areas and and whatever we couldn't, uh, we've handled in terms of infiltration and groundwater. So uh, we feel that, you know, we've handled uh done, um, you know, appropriate job and that, I don't know if staff. Um, or in, you know, town engineer had any comments on the stormwater report. Um, we haven't, we haven't heard. In fact, I think I believe the the fire marshal approved the the parking space, uh, the parking layout, right?
Yeah, that that's right. Um, and the town engineer did not have any comments on the drainage system. He was satisfied with it.
Okay.
And as Mr. Zad had indicated, uh, these areas here, uh, you can. You know, these little island corners, you know, can accommodate, you know, uh, handicap access or at least, you know, pedestrian access at least to the corner. You know, so they're a little bit off the the beaten paths, if you will, uh, the main traffic way. Uh, before they get to to go down the driveway and these were recommended by the fire marshal. Um, you know, just to have either a mountable curb or a paint hatched. Uh, corner area, which we've done the paint hatch, the yellow painted lines to accommodate any fire apparatus that needs to get back. Um, and to to mount the curb, to make the turn radius for those those vehicles. So. And that's it. Of course, if if we are able to um, you know, discuss with Public Works and and reverse this, the. The bollards that you see that we position would, of course, you know, be switched around, obviously, to to block uh any vehicles from hitting the. The closest part of building in the direction of the flow.
I have just one last uh comment on the um, the existing exit. Um, I think I'd mentioned a couple of weeks ago about widening that, and I think Hal also mentioned about widening that. And I I would just like to uh again say, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, there was, there was some uh request or about how far would it be from anybody walking down into the basement? This is, there's two, there's a granite post here and a granite post here. And that's the top step and these go down uh into the basement. And from what I gather, it's basically just storage down there. Um, and that we could certainly uh look into that. I mean, obviously, we want the signs. Um, you know, displayed appropriately. Uh, so we may be able to stretch that out if if the commission feels. Um, that that would be, uh, I know that the the requirement was twelve foot wide minimum. And so if we if we bump that out, it's, you know, it'll get us closer to the building, which wouldn't be the best. Um, in terms of the sightline view, but uh, you know, give a little bit more real estate there so they have a little more elbow room.
But just just a comment on that. I mean, we. Everything would be nice, but we meet the guidelines, like twelve feet is what's required and we've satisfied that.
But note note that I was, I wasn't suggesting making it wider. I just wanted to see it shifted over. Keep it twelve feet. That's a, I I thought that was a good dimension. Just it should just be closer to that first step. Which still keeps it away from the granite posts. On the other hand, it also keep gets you farther away from those uh meters that you're inches away from right now on the south side. Actually, it looks like you're missing a bollard that you'd want to protect the meters. So that gives you actually a little more breathing room if you pull it back just a little bit.
Anything else, Barbara?
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, so.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. I don't have any additional questions or comments. Thank you.
Nothing from your library?
I'm had time to read it.
Steven?
Uh, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for addressing all the concerns that have been laid out so far. Um, before the night is over, can we, are are we switching the location of the entrance and exits?
So what I was going to ask Deb, because as I mentioned in the beginning, like we only have this night. Um, to to navigate this. So perhaps, um. If approved, you know, one of the um contingents would be we would reverse it if the town. Um, engineer permitted, because that's the only thing that's holding us back from reversing it, is he was the one that wanted this direction. Um, and he was unreachable over the last several weeks for comment in asking if if we could change that.
Yeah, Deb, I think that's what you said last that last meeting.
That's right. I mean.
It was the recommendation from the town.
That that's right. It was. It was actually from the Public Works Director um to to have this traffic circulation. Um, I I think I think what Sarah has proposed is makes sense. I really would not advise you to just make that a condition of approval. Public Works um really does have the authority over these driveways. Um, and so, you know, reverse the traffic flow if approved by Public Works, I think is appropriate.
Okay, cuz cuz with that, one of the concerns that we we raised in the last meeting uh dealt with. Uh, that, you know, say that if with the new policy that it's not open to the public during the week, but on the weekend. Uh, that it is open, if the attendant is at the exit, that will lead to cars going in, finding that the lot is full. And then having to exit. And um, you know, the attendant won't be able to weigh in on that at all. So, you know, I I was trying to figure out what's, you know, what would be a good solution, you know, what series of lights or I don't, you know. Just a sign that says we're full.
I had.
But I'm 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 opposed to a lot of lot of signs.
Yeah, they tend to disappear.
Yeah, signs and, you know, stuff that lights up and, you know, all that stuff. You get into a lot of just visual pollution.
So perhaps a reasonable solution to that would be in the middle of the entrance to be a sandwich for, just like the Mystic Art Museum has. This says lot full. Usually theirs is on the sidewalk, but it would be unnecessary to put that here. It could just be right in the middle of the driveway.
And that would be something that the attendant would just prop up.
Exactly.
And just block the block the entrance um when he sees the lot is full.
Yep.
Yep. I guess tha- that's what the Art Association does, right? Yeah, all right. Um, so that problem goes away. Um, the signage, um, I concur that, you know, a little tweak to what's on the on the plan right now. Um, keep it small or get, you know, one legible sign with the what you need to know, not, you know. You know, one each way, I think is, you know, what what would be practical. Um, I'm not in favor of the mirror either. I don't think it's going to help. And that's it. That's all I got.
Okay, Kevin?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to agree um with the ingress and egress change. Um, I know Deb, you will need to argue this point, so I don't think that should be a blocking point for um this. Application at all, but the but the point is, you know, the argument is, what would you rather have a little blockage or more blockage in in the main street? Or um more risk for a um pedestrian? And I think it's a strong argument. Um, my point um this evening and with the applicant is, I think they've done a due diligence in a very good fashion. To listen to our concerns and within a business framework to embrace the um. The regulations um that planning and zoning uh lay out, and I think actually they've done a good job on it. Um, I will say, Deb, just when we get to the motion, which I didn't fully understand, but we can talk it through. Where you said prior to the opening of the lot to the public, so I didn't know whether that was every weekend or or just when this whole. Um, um, you know, parking lot opens. I just didn't know whether you you were making a distinction there, but you can explain that. And then the last thing was just hopefully a little funny tongue in cheek when um. When um Brady spoke, you know, he basically said, if he can make, if he can turn around here, was he talking that he's a low bar? That if he can do it, anyone can make the turn? I wasn't sure about that, but um that was just a citizen reply out there when Todd Brady said that. So. I think he said it's a low bar. It can be done. But as a business person, you know, make that happen. So I think it's an application that you've done. Um, a a good job on and listening and responding to, I'm not voting tonight. I think it's a good application. That's it, Jeff.
All right. And I think most of my questions have been addressed. But I I also have a concern that Barbara had of where does where does a attendant hang out in one of the. The middle of the winter time. I don't think it's realistic to you. Thank him. He's going to have a beach chair and an umbrella to protect himself from a blizzard. I think uh removing the kiosk probably should have left the uh tenant shack there.
You're the skier, aren't you?
Yes.
They have um attendance all winter.
Yeah, but he's not standing out, not doing anything or they're dressed for it. But I mean, is that realistic? I'm not saying that I oppose the plan. I think it's just something that ought to be addressed. And most of the time you have to, if you're skiing, you need to move around to survive. You don't not standing around for. For hours and for eight hours a day. Uh, and that was another question I had. When you, a lot, when it's open for public use. That's twenty four hours a day. I don't expect that you want to have an attendant there twenty four hours a day, do you? You just want them certain hours or?
So I I want to start by not answering your question. And I'll I'll get my way around to an answer. Um, the reason, one of the reasons that we created this. Least tenant model is to increase safety and decrease traffic. Um, so that's, that's how we ended up where we were. Um, so your question is, what are you going to do in a twenty four hour tenant? No, that wasn't the intention. You know, the intention was at ten o'clock, you know, the attendant puts cones up in front of the entrance. You know, the drivers know that they have to leave. The tenant comes back on at nine o'clock in the next morning. Hopefully, all the cars are gone. If they're not, then that's something that the attendant and the applicant will have to deal with. Um, but that's how they planned on navigating that situation.
Okay, so you're saying that if the attendant, if after the attendance hours are gone, you're going to block entry to the to the parking lot?
Well, we would block it with an orange cone. I mean, obviously.
Well, yeah, but they're right. I don't mean physically, but. And so that restaurants and stuff wouldn't have access to it at nighttime? Was that what it was?
After ten o'clock, no, it's no.
Okay.
Well, the people in there would still be in there.
No, I I understand that. I was thinking of just people entering or. And there would not be allowed overnight parking, I assume.
I don't, I mean, we didn't address that. I think that if there were cars parked overnight, that that wouldn't be be an an issue. Um, but that's some best, that's those little things that we still need to figure out.
All right. And you you know, last, uh, in our last session, there was some discussion about putting some protection up. For the electric meters on the properties to the south. I didn't see on this drawing that there was anything identifying that. And maybe it doesn't have to be a protection, but just some sort of a fence or something. Is it might be a visible thing as opposed to a bollard that would prevent somebody from physically running into it.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. I thought I was a really good listener during a, when I re listened to it, I didn't catch that. Um, Leo had just indicated we can put a bollard there.
Well, or something.
Yeah. There's gonna be.
I mean, it might be a visible ver- barrier, like putting up a wrought iron fence for just in front of the meters or just something, just so the people. Are somewhat aware of it.
Right.
Hmm.
Okay.
I mean, it'd be just so they, you know, it has something to catch the eye. And what, when we talk least spaces, is there a note on the on your drawing? Because I can't read the thing when it's so small.
There's not. That's not actually on the site plan.
It is not?
Well, I don't know if it actually, if I don't know if his business model about. Well, I don't know if it actually, if I don't know if his business model got placed on the site plan. I didn't know if it was necessarily appropriate to put it there.
Well, if we're saying it's either open to the public or or it's not, if it's leased. I think it has to be somewhere, and I don't know where else it would go.
Well, I think the word would be private, not leased. We don't care, as you say, the business model, whether it's leased or. It's either private or it's public. Those are the two choices.
Well, then we should say if it's if it's uh open to the public, there will be an attendant in place. I hate to do that because if the attendant wants to, has to take a bio break or something. I don't want to have that. It's a violation to the requirement.
Then he must put a cone up.
Well, maybe.
Yeah.
Right, the the management plan is.
That would be just.
In narrative form, and we can place it on the plan if indeed you approve it, or notes to that effect.
Or just to say there's a plan, okay?
Yep.
All right. So it's time to think about uh our action here.
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yes, huh?
Oh, if I could just make one more quick comment, I think, please, uh, it's the, as far as the signage goes for the uh lot full. I, there's gonna be an attendant there, and I think that any signs that there could be, you know, uh, switched. If it says open to the public, or it says uh private, you know, I don't know what. The attendant is there, they can, it would seem to me they would be able to handle that. And the only thing that I would like to see is, I've it, I've heard just about everyone weigh in on whether or not they would like these driveways switched.
Well, that's what I was thinking about is, I think we should add.
Thank you.
One statement into the uh proposed motion. Reflecting that, and the other types of items, leave those as technical issues.
Yeah, Bob, can you stop your screen chair, please? I want to put the motion up, the draft motion.
Oh. Well, that's the one you passed out. I was thinking we could add add a statement that uh. The enter- entry and exit or what is it, ingress and egress. Uh, drives shall be reversed if approved by Public Works.
Yes. Yes, we can, we can do that. And then um to answer Kevin's question about the first um modification I've suggested here. Um, which is a certificate of site plan compliance must be issued for the parking lot improvements prior to opening the lot to the public. Uh, by public, I meant essentially everyone, uh, you know, whoever the private folks are that are gonna have the leases. As well as the general public. And I'm suggesting this modification because typically a certificate of site plan compliance is. Is something that is requested when a certificate of occupancy is requested for a building. Well, that's not going to happen here. Um, so I I just wanted to make it very clear that it needed inspections um by. By essentially Public Works, the Fair Marshal, and and the Planning Department before the parking lot is put in use.
Should we add that word use? Would that make?
Sure.
I mean, where it says opening the lot to.
Or just prior to use of the lot.
Prior, I like that better because.
Prior to use of a lot.
Yes, Deb, I would understand them perfectly then, if that's the writing.
So what would we say opening? Prior to opening the lot to what or?
Just prior to use of the lot.
Prior. Oh, change opening to use, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, you mind if I mention something about? The the cones we're talking about and blocking it off?
Yeah.
Well, I was just thinking about the tenants. If in fact, when the tenant, during the weekend, when. The uh, there is no attendant there and they just block it off, well, the tenants can come and go as they please. That would require the tenant pull out, I don't know, straddling the sidewalk, get out, move a cone away. Pull in, move the cone back and back of him. Not quite sure how that how that works.
I mean, I would just recommend that, you know, Planning Department just cover that in the technical aspects, is that there's a plan, you know. Egress and how to collect money, and and that's part of the site of certificate plan. I'm sure the applicant would provide that as far as part of the certificate site plan or technical item. That's what I was suggesting.
Or it's where the cones are placed, yeah.
Yeah, where they're, if they were placed ten feet inside the driveway, gives the same effect and car could pull in and move or not.
You see a little ineffectual.
Just put the uh cone to the.
Are we gonna put something in this that?
Excuse me?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, did I miss something, or are we gonna have something on the site plan that says that an attendant will be there when it's open to the public?
So that is part of the narrative um of that was submitted along with the revisions. We will add a note that um describes how this parking lot will be managed. Didn't want to do that before you guys had reviewed the management plan and were comfortable with it.
So there there is a management plan, or is that something we should say? The staff shall the shall approve a management plan?
No, I mean, I think it's something that's described in the the letter that we sent to you addressing your concerns. How, and so we'll just place a note on the plan that that succinctly describes that.
So that would be covered by technical.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I'm just looking at at what text we want to put in to the uh to the motion. So I may, if, does everybody agree that if we just add, we'll revise the uh. First statement to opening the lot to use of the lot, and then add a. Then another new statement that says the the entry and exit driveway shall be reversed. If approved by Public Works is a condition, and then everything else would be a technical item.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Does that make sense to everyone?
Sounds good. It does.
Okay. So, just, cuz I don't want to go through a lot of amendments. We don't need it. I'll I'll make a motion and we're for S I T twenty-one oh nine Mystic Parking LLC, one Pearl Street. Make a motion to approve a site plan, S I T twenty-one dash oh nine for Mystic Parking LLC, one Pearl Street. With the following modifications. One, a certificate of site plan compliance must be issued for the parking lot improvements. Prior to use of the lot. Two, the entry in exit driveway shall be reversed if approved by Public Works. Three, all staff technical items shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second.
This motion, it's moved in second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'm comfortable.
Hearing none, uh, will vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously unanimously. And we wish the applicant good luck on his parking.
Thank you so much, everyone. We really appreciate.
Been a tough issue.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, good night.
Good night, everybody.
All right, and everybody's learned some more about how to work with Zoom too. That's tough. The I T world makes everything difficult. Okay.
It does, but we're all, we're all like our grandchildren now. Really slick.
Yeah. Okay, all business, none, no business, uh, new applications? Do we have any, Deb?
No.
No new referrals? Report a chair. I did sign the uh drawings for the Gerard Nissan uh revision of their site plan. And for the uh Emporium application have been signed. I guess there were some emails that were passed around on H R Bill sixty-one oh seven, which I assume the staff. Will have a presentation for us when the cog writes up their their summary of the bill.
So yeah, actually, I I did find something on the Connecticut Planners Association website, so I'll forward that to you. It's a description of all of the changes in that.
Yeah, but it might be good if you, if it was added to a future.
Absolutely.
As a summary, cuz it the, there is a lot in that I saw in there. We have to be trained now. And we have to issue an annual report for some, I forgot. More work for the state, so they have to hire a new employee or something.
But I like certification, so.
I had read that there was uh an opportunity for towns to opt out.
Of of some of the items.
Sections.
Some of the sections, but those sections actually, things like accessory dwelling units. I mean, it's something that we've had in the regulations for years.
But that would.
Forgotten what the other thing was.
But that will be in our presentation.
Okay, thank you.
And then uh some information went out for our upcoming uh workshop. For a month, it's coming up on Monday. So, people ought to start taking, you know, thinking about it. What we want to do, cuz we're almost gonna start beginning and work through what we want for development of the M E C. Through our two workshops and then figuring out the specific requirements that the town staff has requested.
Yeah, I think Deb, I I thought Deb did a good job where she clearly divided that. Um, what we're talking about is a floating zone, not a floating zone specific to the Mystic Bluff Plan, correct?
No, we're not addressing the Mystic. And we're met, we're. The M E C, the development of the M E C state owned property.
That's a great distinction. Thank you.
That's what we're talking about.
That's right. Okay, got it.
If I can find a library in Maine like Susan did, then I'll be able to attend.
Go to Vermont, go to a progressive state, Barbara.
We sold all the library books on Saturday. Cycling, where you'll get them back in six, in another year, put back on the on the shelf. Hmm? I thought you were used to do the Bill Library. Now you've expanded to the Mystic Noi.
I did, any library that wants a volunteer, I'm there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Oh, just so that uh it's clear, I don't know if the public is listening. But I just, uh, Deb, in your note to us, the the only distinction I would like to make is the difference between a public hearing and a public meeting. So that people understand just what that means, um, so that they don't think that. That they're the same, yeah.
The workshop, yeah, can be attended, but there is no input. Is.
Right, well, but I mean, even like, but it it is a public meeting, whether or not there will be an opportunity for people to to be heard.
No, there is none at the workshop.
True, but a public meeting that is held to review a site plan, there will always be public communications on that agenda.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that people understand what those words mean.
Right.
But that's, yeah, anything where there's a decision to be made. By the commission, then we have, we should have the ability for the public to input.
Good. No, that's, I want to, I'm glad that you just said that.
The workshop is not, we can't make a just a formal decision.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you just said that. Thank you.
That's gotta be the distinction, for us anyway, I mean, for the this commission. Okay. So. I don't know if anybody needs any additional information ready for our workshop. They do, they, you should get it out. And then we have a report of the commissioners, if they have anything to report or bring up.
I have nothing to report, but I do have a request of staff. About the blight ordinance, which I read um. Recently, and I would like if we could get a list of the status of any complaints. What complaints have been made? And what the status of those complaints are. And if there are any recent um examples of resolutions to uh any blight complaints.
Sure, um, I believe the enforcement officer keeps a running list. Um, that he shares, I think, with the town manager on occasion, so we certainly get that for you.
Great, that's, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, rather, rather than doing an an special list, can we just get the report to the town manager, Deb?
Or have him publish it. Or have him just publish it, so all citizens could have it.
What do they call that thing where they, the block that they put you out on?
I know it well, Mike.
It might be something that when the, when the uh enforcement officer sends that to the town manager. He just include, I mean, it would seem like there would be a number of uh different groups that might be interested in seeing that communication as well.
I think it's good to see that.
And it would just be a matter of.
Progress is being made. I think that would be a good thing for us to see.
Yeah, no, thank you, Barbara.
Yeah, if it goes to the public, I think that's.
Or you see something on the list for far too long, you know, I think of uh the nursing home on God's Free Street, which is. Been on the radar for as long as I've been on this commission, I think.
Well, we get.
They have made some progress on it, but getting the grass cut is not a problem.
You gotta get the dirt spread around first before you can grow grass.
Yeah, weeds.
Yeah, it looks pretty rough. But I thought we were gonna get a report on that, Deb, one of these.
Did, and I did not get it for you. I will.
Sorry.
Another two or three weeks.
No, it's fine. I I went on vacation shortly after the last meeting and I've just come back, so, yeah.
This isn't the most important thing. If nobody has anything else, then a report of staff would be the next item. Do you have anything, Deb?
I don't have anything, no.
Okay. If no one has anything else, and I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Back motion to adjourn.
Next meeting is June twenty-second.
Next regular meeting.
Regular meeting.
Right.
On our workshop, and our workshop starts at six o'clock.
That's correct.
Great, thank you very much.
I thought it was six thirty.
No, six, I thought it was advertised.
It's whatever's on the agenda.
Yeah, I thought it was six thirty-two.
It's whatever's on the agenda.
Ooh, the agenda six is six thirty.
Six thirty, it is six thirty.
We we talked about six, but.
Yep.
I think I talked you out of it.
I think that's right. That's right, it is six thirty.
It's clearly brought that up. It's clearly brought that up.
Alright, good night, everybody.
Good night, ma'am.
Hey, good night, thanks.